Make the motion, we accept the. Consent meeting agenda, oh no, we're making a motion for the approval minutes for the regular meeting on April twenty third.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, all in favor say aye, aye.
I'll make a motion for non-public meeting on April twenty third for one and two.
Motion made and seconded, anything further, all in favor say aye, aye.
To make a motion to accept the consent agenda, second.
The large consent agenda. Motion made and seconded, any discussion, anything further, all in favor say aye, aye. Public input. We'll have another opportunity at the end, anybody online Garrett? Thank you. Nominations.
I'll make the motion that we reappoint Larry Proto to the capital improvement program committee, second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye, aye.
Make the motion that we reappoint Kathy Bergstrom to the economics development advisory committee, second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye, aye.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Aaron Major. As an alternate.
To the economic divide, development advisory committee, yes. Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye, aye. Appointments, DPW Director Joe DeRusso. We're gonna start with paving. What's your preference?
Not too bad yourself. So our annual paving contract went out, um. All states, as always, they were a little bitter on it, so we're recommending going with them. Um, gonna start work shortly, we put a clause in this year that the work had to be completed by October thirty first. Uh, all states like saving us till last because their plants close by, so the mix stays.
Do you want to verify or confirm the roads that we're planning on doing, I had the list from the CIP, I think it's accurate. I had Talbot path, Aldridge, Safford, Oliver Hill.
Yes, and then the addition of, yeah, Callow Hill work, um, took the hill, the pavement of the hill on Callow Hill to the gravel section.
That's in the three seventy seven.
Yes, that is included in that, and then our gravel portion, our, the class five portion of Oliver Hill Road. Extended paid, so there'll be no longer that show strip of gravel road. We're working the Cold River because they use the section of Oliver Hill Road behind. Airport, uh, Mike and I have tried already with them as far as moving with property swap, it just makes sense for them, it makes sense for us. But every time we bring it to them, they're all on board with it and they never follow through. Uh, so the, the plan is still hopefully, so a lot of people don't realize that road behind the airport. That Cold River runs their lowers and start up Kirno and that is the town road. The road that comes straight in then, the majority of the traffic we use off of thirty two is actually Cold River's private road. Uh, so it just makes so much sense to put them to fence that off, walk off the road behind of the, uh. Post office, that'd be their private road and then the road can straight down, but we did that on a ballot and said. We've gone from, I know former directors have, but we, we met them recently, they were all on board. But I recently, with the paving, I've asked them to provide either some funds or some asphalt for paving that road, and we told them good. I just, I can't go, make a road room to run heavy equipment and lowers on it, so. Hopefully that comes through, allow the cost, allow us to pay something else.
You let them know from the, you just tell them that we like that little guy.
I, you know, yeah, talk to them about that and their, their response was, well, how about we provide asphalt, I said, perfect, and then they, they. Yeah, they need to talk to the powers that be and can get back to us, so I need to stay on top of Garrett, so they're having some communicating. Sounds like they're open to it, if they're not open to it, I don't plan on, I plan on doing some patchwork there, but not completely storing the road. But hopefully this can be a springboard to get that switch to, to go through the problem, to go through it, it makes sense, I can't remember. Potentially lead to a couple of other buildable house lots, I think. Uh, let's assume there's some land right out on the side of Cold River, it's private road that you got no, no access to. Makes sense on all of them.
I'm not sure of all the roads, but you mentioned the gravel roads, and we're gonna. Do some of the gravel part of the roads that we grade again now, are we eliminating some of the grading right now?
We're trying to, the roads that are, for example, that Oliver Hill Road is a real short section of road. It's difficult to grade because you just don't have the road, again, it's hills, so it's prone to the washing. So that one is one that's being eliminated this year that being paved, and then there's a very short section of Oliver Road, uh, UK is. Fifteen feet wide, it's wide to point to three houses on it, it's approximately. Can't remember the exact number, it's approximately twelve hundred feet long, if that, it is problematic, cloud, problematic to grade, so we're.
If you're gonna save it, not in the long run by doing this.
Yes.
You don't have to maintain these gravel roads.
Yes and no, and then it leads to other maintenance down the road as well, so you're, you're out of. Within ten years, the asphalt road needs some type of maintenance, a road like that's not gonna see heavy trucks. It's not gonna really have a lot of traffic on, so you made it some more out of it, but I think it definitely cuts down on the problematic erosion and maintenance. I've never looked at the total cost in grading versus how long to be able to replace my road. But to put those short ones that are problematic, I'm in favor of payment. No, I always get to, it's hope someday we don't have graded roads and you don't have to have that big expensive grader. We use it for ditching. Uh, uh, to put a table for travel on the road and reaching the play off, pull stuff out and then load up the loader. I'll actually use it for other ones, we do, but it'd be something that, um, we could look at rentals for. The other thing, we don't get the ones like we used to, but let's see if it's cyclical, when you get real bad ice, heavy snowpack, it rains above me like a, it's straight up. Heavy ice and snow, when it's, when it's real cold, we haven't seen a one like that in years.
Did you consider taking on what good extent out of the hell road to complete without the work?
I have not.
Is it anything worth considering?
I think there's, I think the potential is there.
You know off the top of your head how far?
I don't have, I don't.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty good stretch, I think. You mentioned house lots, there's.
Yeah, a lot of land up there, I know there has been. Park, I know last, a cell company was doing something with the cell power and they're looking for access up there. I've never walked it, so I don't know really what the land is like up there, but.
The class six portion is better than the class five dirt portion anyway, those people put a lot of money into that road, and it washed out.
They washed out two thousand and twenty one, I felt bad for the one that looks up in progress, it's strength over twenty thousand dollars a year before. And then most twenty one floods, devastating, being one of the five problems. But I think that, that would be fairly easy to do upgrade that section of road.
The big issue might be on the, uh, Route twelve side where there's a lot of water. There's pond, so. Garrett, make a motion on that paving.
Sure, I'll make a motion and strap it here, second.
Okay, I have a motion to authorize the expenditure up to three hundred and seventy seven thousand eight hundred dollars. For the twenty twenty four road improvement project with thirty thousand. From the John Flatley Company and remaining funds from the twenty twenty four asphalt budget and FEMA funds. And authorize the town administrator to sign contract documents with all state asphalt's. Or outstate construction, all in favor say aye, aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you. Denman Thompson Bridge.
Yes, big one. Uh, as you know, I'm working with a couple contractors and engineer, uh, as far as the maintenance that's needed for that bridge. Uh, so I have a full cold, cold river bridge, they are able to get, get the, uh, joint, and they kind of have it done this year. Between July and August, uh, Hanson Bridge was the other bridge company that we use them for, and working with them. I've got somewhat of an informal quote from them, but they can't get the joint and they can't give me the price of how it's victorious. Initially, they provided a price of approximately twenty sixty five thousand dollars, which was recently said they wouldn't be able to get to it this year. And they said it could be an additional thirty to seventy five thousand dollars for the joint. Using a different company, as the engineer explained to me, it's, it's not prepared. Really put it out on a form of big engineering, and the engineer told me there's no reason to do that, he highly recommend over the bridges. Specialize, they do a lot of the state of the nation, they do a lot of work for the law, state of the nation, I talked to them about that, and they said. Definitely give you a decent product, so they are able to do that, you can see the formal quote they provided. The, uh, sum for the decking, the membrane is a hundred fifty five thousand dollars, hundred seventy seven. Uh, the only thing, they won't know it needs concrete work. Until they get the asphalt remembering, that's, there's, there's concrete work that needs to be repaired. There's gonna be an additional cost to it, but there's no way to tell until they strip the asphalt and, uh, inspect that concrete. Uh, but their plan is if they were awarded this contract, they will move right in as soon as the school shuts down. Uh, and start working on the decking portion, they would have prep for the joint, the joint would come sometime in August. And they see no issue with getting the work completed before the school opens back up, and you'll see the second cost of a hundred and thirty three, nine hundred forty four. Thousand for the, uh. For the joint set. That's the install and the cost of that expansion building. Uh, started preparation for it, park at the fire department, uh, they decided that they. Didn't feel comfortable leaving fire trucks outside at night during daytime, they would save some fire trucks on the other side of the river. But they're more than comfortable that they can pre-mutually have adequate responses and they didn't seem to need, uh, to risk equipment out at night. I've spoken with the campground, they're okay with it, they understand it needs to be done, and there are lots of other ways to get into, uh. Again, a little bit of campground, DOT is on board with it, and, uh. I recommend moving forward with cold river bridges this year. We'll start asking into the public sooner than later, once, uh, it's coming out. Like I said, this is not a question, this work needs to be done, it needs to be done sooner than later, we could hold off a little bit. Uh, but we have funds for it now, the Cold River is available, we're looking forward.
Best case, if there's no concrete work necessary, how long will it be totally shut down?
Minimum, everything went perfect, he thinks he can be done in six weeks. Uh, he thinks, uh, August he can have the joint, uh, he's gonna order the joint this week if he decides to move forward, maybe get it a little sooner. Uh, but he thought around six weeks, he figured if you had a joint, the first week of August, we could have it back open the second. At the end of the second week of August.
Right.
And like I discussed before, we wanted to do one-way draft, we do a half of nine, they, the bridge company is talking double the cost. I don't want to make any conveniences, but I can't see double on the cost.
It helps that we don't have the money for double.
That's a good point too. I'll make that motion that we, um.
Motion made and seconded, authorize expenditure of up to three hundred and ten thousand for Denman Thompson Bridge Maintenance Project. With seventy one thousand seven sixty eight thirty eight from House Bill Two. Two hundred and thirty eight thousand two hundred and thirty one dollars and sixty two cents from the Town Bridges Capital Reserve Fund. And authorize the town administrator to enter into contract documents with Cold River Bridges LLC. Anything further?
Just one thing, I just wanted to mention, we talked about a little bit, I think the last time you were here, but there is the risk depending on what we find, what we.
Right, where's that money coming from?
Hopefully it's within this, uh, additional, we got about eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
How much damage could be done, do we know that? The only concern I have is, back when we paved Denman Thompson, the south was just a project, we weren't ready to move forward with the bridge. And I had a big company mill it and put a, a fresh, thin top coat on it to protect it, such a protective, come salt and everything, get it down to the concrete and steel. And there's two spots where water's coming, and I don't know how it's getting in between somewhere, a little concrete sweating. It's hard to say, underneath it looks pretty decent, we inspected underneath. But there's two areas that I said to myself, why, water, like shortly after it was paved, pothole and form. If you drive across them, you can see it, you're heading towards Route ten, the right side of the bridge, about halfway down, you can see a pothole. And water, that's my only concern, uh, but when bold bridge companies look at it, they said the concrete looked pretty good from, from. Below, they actually, once they get the asphalt off, they literally pick a chain, they can drag a chain and, and they can hear hollow if there's broken stuff on it. I think that's essentially what the test was for. But like I said, these guys, that's all they do, they specialize in that, if there's no concrete that needs to be done, they simply put the memory on, move forward. Concrete is weak, they either jackhammer it out, get deep enough, or they can get it to the rebar and they form off areas to catch concrete, so. I think even if we do have this concrete work, we'll see if we should.
Not trying to sidetrack, I just want to make sure.
No, that's fine. All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye, aye, the ayes have it. Okay. Preston Bridge Decking and Damage Repair. I guess he hit the bridge. Yeah. And they caught him.
Yes. I was encouraging this product after that, oh, the yard is something that's that far, I saw.
This is off the swan side, well, the town side of that, the other side of the toll.
Oh, I figured the same, it's a different trial, put out the best.
It's been probably eighteen, in the last nine months, probably hit five times.
No, he didn't go all the way through though, he just stopped, yeah, yeah.
I, I don't know if you've heard of, like, it was totally laughing before, but.
Uh, Facebook police said, he was talking to the police, so.
Well, I think that may be at the bridge.
I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't hear like, consider if it's, but regardless, it's, it's been, I know I get criticized sometimes, but when I get scared, I don't run right out, stop what we're doing. First it, and I know we don't, because it gets bad on certain level bases, uh, and. So as I was looking at the face of it, that shit's kind of just the thin boards if they lift off. But in the main, big canyon beans are on top, they're higher than that face, structures are not, sometimes they can hit that face to make it through. And then they hit them near the ramp, because when I stopped and looked at it all over the other day, I realized that that's, that face from down below, yeah, maybe. And as they're leaving, sometimes when they turn to the right, they get over enough where they catch the corner. So why do we have to have face so far down, does that to protect the main beams?
That's the way it's designed.
The way it was designed, yeah. Because the face drops down quite a bit, though, other than the main beams are put by, you know, it's, that's a big difference. So we, we literally have people drive out, they know what they're doing wrong, they get out, they look and see, and like, okay, I think I can make it across. It's crazy, and I mean, like, road signs above the bridge not gonna stop, not. I guess, oh, we can put a big eye beam in front of it, about twenty, that's twenty feet in front of it, and then you see somewhere it stops, but it obviously would not be very. But what about, is that box trucks into doing this? You've got box trucks, you have, uh, fifth wheel campers, uh.
Oh, fifth wheel campers.
Nothing in tow, I mean, you know, nothing in tow is allowed through, so. We had a tree spade take out the, uh, Carl Road Bridge one time. You know, with a tree, I guess.
It was, I opened to me when we were limping in the sidewalk, probably before, I spent a lot of time down at work and. And just see the crazies, like I said, people pull up, get out, look, and they're like, make it broad. They hit, I mean, they don't just try to notch up to it, then look, you know, let's get close and see if I'm a big game. They get hit, something about, I think to myself, something about that, I'm much worse than the, uh, than the rest, yeah. But is that the moment putting cameras on? Like, if I'm getting on all of them, you're off acid, okay, but we have, I got that dick ass.
Working its way through.
I think it's in the center.
What is the argument about cameras, that why you can't have them, but we're practicing, because somebody. That's why I stated New Hampshire doesn't have clay builders, there, a law does not allow for the. The whole end of that, like a lot of states capture registration information, keep the data for thirty days or so, and New Hampshire won't allow, so kind of. Clay builders, essentially.
I guess, huh? No, because I was pulled up, my thought basically when I was traveling in his car, something happened, and I was pulled up by a state trooper, and I was, someone asked, I'm like. How did you even know when we said, there's a plate, I'm like, ah, you don't have that in here. Like, you can't tell if a state trooper is in, in town, like if someone was caught for drinking and driving. And they, they were, and the cow was pulling down the road, you, you can read that, right? That, that you know means an offender?
I did well to play on my car by my typical suspicion from, from the cruiser, but as far as any devices that just automatically.
No, I am.
For example, if we, uh, different times with our homicide suspect, and we think the person's driving down ninety one south. We'll contact Massачo, please, they'll put cruiser on the side of the road, did you know, or just sit there, it replays, that automatically does, that puts out alert and catches that plate.
Interesting.
So that bridge needs decking of a different type of wood, and it's, we drive a proper, or you stop and sit out and look, watch, or it's coming up. Their routine, my desk, I am no woodwork expert, so I went to Hanson Bridge again, looked at this. GDS Landmark Group, Grayson Smith looked at it, uh, they're white oak plants, white oak is extremely expensive, but. Approximately twenty six hundred fifty square feet of white oak needed to do the decking on the bridge. And it ranges anywhere from thirty thousand to eighty thousand, depending on the quality of the, of the white oak. Uh, I received a, or a estimate from GDS Landmark, they do the work at forty seven thousand six hundred twenty dollars. Uh, the lumper's, the, the material itself was somewhere in the thirty thousand dollar range. Uh, the reason why I had Grayson give me a, an estimate to do all the work, is it needs to be done sooner than later. The crew has done this type of work in the past, but they're gonna be much slower than have the contractor come in, and we wouldn't be able to get to it until. Probably late on apple pavings season, uh, and the other thing I was considering is the cost of the material, how expensive it is as far as waste and such. I think it made sense to move forward with the contractor, Hanson Bridge gave me an estimate, they gave you two estimates. Nothing formal, it was, it was just quiet phone, they were in the forty eight thousand dollar range. Then they also had one option that they were recommending eighty thousand with a higher end oak, couldn't see doing that. Uh, and then, Piggiball Bridge was shut down, uh, we'd have Grayson make the repairs to what quality was there. Once again, in preparation for this, I talked to DOT. This would like, we would do this before Denman Thompson is shut down, so we won't have two major bridges shut down at the same time. Grayson's confident he can get to this in June, he can get to it as soon as he can get the lumber, a lot of these were to work. They were, the bridge would be shut down during the day, opened up at night. Uh, the other thing I need to look at while we have a shutdown, there are two large pine trees on the town side of the bridge that are leading toward the bridge. It would be a perfect time to take down those pine trees, so they don't come down on top of the bridge, I think DOT's completely on board with it. I just need to check that the property, or whatever, I'm sure it wouldn't be an issue, but that would be the ideal fact, have those trees removed. That might just come from the operational budget for trees removed from DPW, uh. So like I said, there, I'm not saying we couldn't do it with the, with the entire crew, but it would be much later in the year. The bridge would likely be shut down for more time. Uh, and as you drive, you can go down and watch right now, the horse popping up on, it needs to be done.
That all original? Have we ever done this before?
Um, not, no.
Have we ever done any second?
Yeah, it's the one down here, the deck, uh, we know.
Different company than we're using now?
Uh, this one down here was the one that the DPW crew did, and that Hanson Bridge, when he was looking at that bridge, he says he's, he has done work to it. He did a full inspection of it when he was looking at the deck, and he said everything looks great, it's just he could replace the old three doors. The other bridges, the deck, decking are in better, a lot better condition, sooner or later, this one is probably gonna be the light one, the next one that needs to be.
So what is the lifespan of these buildings, ten years, fifteen?
I think you were in that, it's in one of the twenties, twenties? So we'll get through twenty years out of this one? Make that motion that was, as you said.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded, authorize the expenditure of up to fifty thousand dollars for the Preston Bridge. Reddecking and repairs from the Town Covered Bridges Capital Reserve Fund. And authorize the town administrator enter into contract documents with GDS Landmark Group. All in favor say aye, aye, the ayes have it, you're recused. Moonshot.
What's that whisper, I mean, razor thin margin. It's close.
They are, the one, the one thing with, uh, for, for the canner, is they made clear that their schedule. It would be at the end of the year before they can get to it, uh, the other positive with other with engineers, they've already done. A planning study for it, for the sewer commission, not, there wasn't much action on what, what their initial study was. So they jumped in off of that, built off of that, moved forward, uh. The time I've worked with Steve Clifton, very, very helpful doing, doing stuff about charging us. Uh, I was kind of working on this pilot program in the transition with sewer commission, so he has been very helpful. Uh, but I don't think it's realistic, consider Royal Caner, just due to the fact of their availability, they made it clear that it was something that gave them here.
Yeah, and the other benefit to Underwood is their work on the water company, where they, you know, they're looking at, they're looking at the utilities, so I think it makes sense to keep those functions together. So it's, uh, making an RFQ qualification based selection, so the expectation is it'll be up to the. Hundred thousand dollars forgivable loans, we would just be looking for the board to authorize the warrant and. Negotiation, which kind of know how that's gonna go, but.
I gotta say, I'm a little lost on this one, I don't, I'm not understanding the whole thing.
They're recommending Underwood engineers for the.
For what?
Engineering.
Oh.
Of the sewer plant.
Oh, for the grant that was important, yeah, okay.
For the waste, wastewater facility, remember, don't get possible.
Two things they're gonna look at.
Gonna make sure when, they're giving up.
They're gonna look at, we, we, Scott, they're gonna look at it, they're gonna look at, the big concern right now of the sewer plant is not being able to treat the fossil first. There's approximately eighty thousand gallons per day that they treat fossil with kibble and ore, plan is able to take. Approximately another forty thousand down the flow, but you can't treat the fossil, so that's the number one short issue. Fix that, resolve that issue without creating other issues, because often when they use something like this app, it creates a loner. And then it makes it so they go over and another. So, we, yeah, there's no, we can't take anybody else over. That will be the number one priority, then it's gonna be, and look at, because I'm updating the plan, what it's gonna need, they, the engineers. When you're doing this type of planning, where are you gonna be at in twenty years, what are your goals gonna be? And then we had those discussions today, so you see some of these communities spending twenty, thirty million dollars on these sewer plants. Then you have to look at, is it part of this planning study, will it be, is it more feasible just to simply. Pipe it into the key, which we already, the key facility, which we already own, a large volume of flow, right now, keen to take. Uh, West Swansea, Hampton West Swansea, still, we just go five more.
We, we did that, we do away with the jumps up ahead, we do away with that, we're just, I, I'm gonna be, stop.
Yeah, everything would go that way. So today, it costs approximately, today's cost of approximately, costs approximately ten million dollars. To do your sewer across there, but if you were gonna tear up a road, you might as well run water line while you're doing it, if that's gonna be the goal of town. Real, like, we do the road, uh, go on, uh, like I said, allow water, welcome to the water, but just to do sewer alone. Then, there's no more, except for the cost of, of the cattle, including some key plant, we do pretty easily. Say, with Milford.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember, I think it's Milford and Epping, they were talking about twenty plus million dollar upgrades.
Hopefully this planning study will come forward with some. Some realistic expert days, part of the study can be used, they, uh, Steve Clifton, Underwood explained today. Part of the money from this grant study can be used to try some different chemical, additional testing, and see if there's a way they can treat this path. In a different manner, uh, but obviously a good portion of these, we've spread it out, so. Make a motion to.
If you want, for Underwood.
Yeah.
And motion to select Underwood engineers to perform the wastewater treatment plant facility study, authorize the expenditure of up to a hundred thousand dollars. From the twenty twenty four Warren Article Number Six. And authorize the town administrator to enter, enter into contract documents and submit related loan documents. All in favor?
Uh.
Aye, the ayes have it. Anything else?
We'll stay for the fire ponds, since you've discussed that with.
Yeah.
Going right into new business, requesting expenditure, Arrowcrest Fire Pond Hydrant.
So much of the work, including the culvert under Arrow, Arrowcrest Drive, was replaced last year using FEMA funds after the. First July flooding before the big one on July nine. First July flooding, before the big one on July nine. Uh, so we had fifty thousand in the capital improvement plan, fortunately, we're only gonna need to use just over fifteen thousand. Uh, basically the only expenses for the actual. Dry hydrant. Uh, so Joe reviewed that with uh Gordon Services, our idea with Charlie Johnson. At DuBois and King was to put, basically to lump it together with Upper Wilson Pond Dam, we didn't include it in the bid, but the idea was to use the same. Uh, vendor, so, he's uh, Joe, Joe met with them, and that's, uh, that's where we got the quote, that's listed in here.
Yeah, and they were like, they're waiting on, but the Upper Wilson Pond Dam, they're just waiting on their stand, Google from the S. Start that work, they would like the new bits within the land, it's a pretty quick project, they're gonna use some of the equipment they have for coppering and so forth, they're gonna use in the water. Do the same over there, fire pond. When, did I see what the fire pond is, did I, did you show me that? Is it on the other side of the road, the dam?
Past Twinkle Town?
It's, no, it's nowhere near that.
Oh, somewhere, so I have any, I'm not.
You got a lobster roll.
He canceled the trip this week, so.
What if we took, we're putting a, a pipe in under the fire pond, is that what, into the fire pond, so the. It's a one now, or this is no new, no, so we're gonna just, okay, last year the flood wiped the road out, FEMA paid to replace the culvert and uh. Fix the road, and now, as you turn into Aero Crest, we'll put a tunnel in your right, you pull up, the water's on the left. There's gonna be a dry eye hole in the area of. We did go there, I think. We did pull it there, there was, I remember the water in that, I, I, I'm just trying to picture it, I don't remember your eyes.
He's a C corps man.
Right, I'll make that motion that way.
Alright, motion made and seconded to authorize the expenditure of up to seventeen thousand dollars for the Aero Crest Fire Pond project. From the Fire Pond Expendable Trust Fund, and authorize the town administrator to sign contract documents with Gordon Services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
The only other guy in our updates right now, we're working a contractor, it's already annual springtime, the cat basin trucking down this week, and now cat basins. Street sweepers have been coming in when they're available, cleaning up roads, sand areas. We have almost every Durvo graded at this point, we're all working on some uh, some culvert replacement. And uh, soon as we get everything graded, a couple problematic culverts replaced, the plan is to start looking at one call, call it, that wide. Oh, you do all the prep up on that one, yeah, and I tell you, this is probably a bit of money, right? Yes, and that's part of the reason not, we'll get some of the other stuff, like I said, we made a dig on the bridge in late fall. And that's what bringing material up, why you're into the edge, the tire threes, uh drainage pipes, and. Some of these roads, we need to, when I think, also what, you know, I know the other team, back on all of the road, before the company comes in. So before they go on baby, we wanna make sure that, all the.
He sure looked good, that was out there. It seemed to weather the winter pretty well.
Yeah, yeah, held up pretty well, all the route that went in after the floods, and they changed out a, an old crud, buried over on West Shore, kind of helping some of your. So a problem areas bad over there, and some of the complaints, uh as far as water, just starting to see what the effects is at, hopefully we'll be at some of those concerns.
The light pole, I'm calling it a light pole. That rotted and fell over on Cold Rivers Road by Neighbor's Store. Is the airport responsible for that, do you think? It's been down for a couple of years, I think, um.
Is it something to do with the airport?
Yeah. It's just a big telephone pole with a red light on top. And it rotted and fell over, and it's just been sitting there, I think. It's not our road, but somebody ought to have taken it out. Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you. You want anything to do with uh Route thirty-two? You're gonna give that for DOT? Yeah, Martin Brook.
Uh, down, part of the bridge project.
Yeah.
Uh, so we had a meeting with Fire Department and uh DOT and DuBois and King last week or the week before, I think. Uh, so basically, if we lumped it in with their project, we just need to do the engineering and provide the cost for that, so. Um, we're looking for up to six thousand dollars from the Fire Pond Expendable Trust Fund to. Authorize Charlie to work on the engineering for that one.
Sounds good.
So this is over by, uh Route thirty-two, by Lake Blake Road, kind of goes down the gully, there's a bridge down there. Uh, so they're gonna look at realigning the road a little bit, placing the bridge, and we're gonna try to. For the fire.
Yeah, the big thing with the engineering is the, DES's wetlands. Restructure was so difficult, we either, we need to announce it, and we need to put the high level study in, and so forth, again, you're. The work itself, a fraction of it's all went in, those.
But because we're kind of piggybacking off their project, hopefully we can get incorporated in their wellness programs, we'll up to our own separate.
Okay, I'll make that motion, sir.
Motion made and seconded to authorize the expenditure up to six thousand dollars for the Martin Brook Dry Hydrant Project. From the Fire Pond Expendable Trust Fund, and authorize the town administrator to sign contract. Documents with DuBois and King, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and the ayes have it.
Joe, good job. And you're addressing for, the people complaining about the water, so you've created a policy that fishing game and DES. More consulted, fishing game doesn't quite like, come up to draw it down, but uh. But as far as the dates go, DES and fishing game are part of. That's great, because now, say, you know, fishing game was involved there, you know, because. I haven't up there, I don't know where, where a geese laying eggs up there anyways, it must be, she's claiming in that marsh here, in the back pond over there.
It's his house.
I haven't seen the geese down there, I've seen them. Well, you got us a half a board left, and that's done. Probably tomorrow, I'll just see what it's doing, just gonna make sure it doesn't get up too high, something off this year, it's not coming back up, it's like usually the. We had less wars than last year, and water levels are.
Well, there's not much, go ahead, there's not much water coming over the Upper Wilson Pond Dam either, so.
Well, I'm gonna check that. The version dam, see if it's not flooded tomorrow, but they're not flowing out hardly any water, you went thirty-five cubic feet per second.
Yeah.
Sometimes they're as high as, in the spring, they're as high as three, four hundred.
Saw that, that too, yeah.
We can, we, we, they feel that it's not gonna affect the height when we work in the dam, but. No, they're gonna be pumping water over when they, when they dam it up, so there's still gonna be water coming over, but there are times. Shortly after the spring, that there's no water. No water. Except to do get some water from some of the other area that doesn't come down from the upper bridge.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Alright, Police Department Incentive Program update.
So I knew it had been a while, I knew it was on top, the Angeles was here, but I was surprised that it was almost, almost six years to the month ago that we. Initially adopted this, so lots, lots changed uh since then, so. Um, we've been fortunate that, I guess we haven't really had to look at it, um, but. Uh, the chief and I reviewed the current incentive policy, and uh developed the recommendations that you see um in the list. Uh, the ten thousand dollar hiring incentive, it's comparable to Keen and other agencies, we found places like Lebanon are offering thirty thousand, so. Uh, there's a pretty lengthy article in the year, which I scanned and sent to you, I didn't want to put it in the package, I thought their uh. Their click police might not be happy to see us uh putting it on our website, but um, just a lengthy thing about the whole recruitment issue, which I know you're all familiar with, so. Um, in addition to updating some of that, we added some additional incentives for our existing officers, if they, you know, if they're able to recruit someone and they succeed. Uh, helping them share some of the benefit a little bit, so I think that might uh be a nice touch, so. Uh, we also added, the incentives were a little unclear on how part timers were treated, so we made that a little more clear. And we added incentives for uncertified, because even that's hard to combine out, so. In terms of cost implications, for better or worse, usually if, you know, we're gonna be handing out incentives, because we have vacant positions, so it can be absorbed, then. We pay out a lot of them in one year, it might be a little tight on the budget, but I think it's something we can.
How long for the ten thousand?
Three year contracts.
CIPC wanna. Open up an account for incentive program? Start banking some money?
I'll let you, I'll let you know, Steve, you're thinking about another account, the trustee, the CIP might be, the trustees' trust funds, with a reminder at someone.
Well, we haven't looked at in six years, it's true that we did, and it's, we're really in trouble with the lease bond, we've gotta, we've gotta do something.
You like it? Motion made to approve the Police Department Incentive Program as proposed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes. The ayes have it. Job description update, assessing coordinator, how long ago was that updated?
Eight years, seven, eight years, seven years, uh, so usually we do them, as you know, when, when people uh leave, fortunately, that's not the case this time. Uh, but we are trying to just work progressively, do one or two a month, so you'll probably be seeing more of them. Uh, so we're just trying to kind of more accurately align, some of the duties that were listed in here have been absorbed by other staff, and then some things that. Uh, this position, I think, makes sense to be involved with, weren't reflected, so. Uh, Christine's been helping out with grants and uh some kind of basic technology stuff in the office, so. I think it's good to have a designated person, when uh Julius was the land use coordinator, he was kind of the point person for initial. Um, issues and kind of going back and forth with the IT company, it avoids town clerk calls, and then she says something to me, and then I call, and then we have three people calling about the same thing. That doesn't help it get fixed, uh, so I think it's helpful to kind of have one uh point person, so. Uh, that's just a little bit of the kind of background of where this came from.
Motion made and seconded to approve the assessing coordinator job description as proposed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Old business. Are we getting an open house yet?
This month, I said.
I have a Blackstone. Thirty-six inch.
Will you do the cooking, or?
If he wants, if I'm available.
I just bought one of those, like.
The way to go.
Never tried it, it's brand new, sitting on my dock, Steve Walsh and Davis Oil. Went optioned it off, and personally didn't want it, can't complain, I bought it from them, I hope it works good.
Works great.
It does, it's a flat top, thirty-six inch.
Just don't use soap on it. It's cast iron. Well, it's not cast, but it's thick steel.
Is it coated?
Nope.
Oh. So you can use a grill screen on it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's nice.
Anything for us? We're just talking grills. Alright. Any other non-public sessions, or, I'm sorry, non-public, any other public input? Uh, public sessions? You wanna do a first? Would you like to go in, non-public, under a, Jimmy?